Call this meeting with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here.
Here.
Bellato.
Here.
Casadis. Casadis absent. Rita.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Holly.
Here.
Holly absent.
Here.
Fernwald.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mac.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
Cantellos Zelman.
Here.
Slattery. Slattery absent. Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to presentation, general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of December the 17th, 2019. Do you have a motion? By Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Fernwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to public comment.
Well, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Thank you. I'm here today, and my name is Rachael Roscoe, and next month we'll have our Black Culture Night in Blue Island. It's our 21st year, I believe. I did email, I believe, all of the aldermen and told you what was going on. The mayor and I, we discussed last year that we'll bring it back to the city annex, to this building, because a lot of the people in Blue Island got kind of mad at me because I took it to Calumet. So, it's back home. This year, we're gonna have Dana Michael Bruce, a professor from Governor State University, and this year is gonna be more of a celebration, because it's the 50th year of jazz. So, it's when jazz started, the 20th, what is it, the 20th century, all the glitter and glam, so this room would be a totally different place if you decided to come and visit. A couple of the aldermen so far have already contacted me. Of course, Mike, Mike contacted, he's part of our group, so he knew ahead of time, but Rayanne also, I was talking to her, some of her students, they're gonna participate this year in the program, and we're gonna have dancers, right?
Uh, it's the plan.
Yeah. So, you know, I still need to meet with them, we're gonna kind of make them sparkle, too. We have Gregory Bingham, he's a saxophone player. He, well, he'd be there, just, he's been from the beginning in the program with us, and if you ever came, you know he's a really good saxophone player. Diane Nicole, she's originally from Blue Island. We have Zachary James, he's from the library. Andre Ware, he's from the fire department, but he's a poet. And we also had a gospel group, Galley Voice of Victory, and they're from Blue Island. So, if you're available, it's on the 21st of February, I'm just giving you a heads up, so you can put that day aside. I didn't pick Valentine Day, so you could go ahead out on your date, Randy. And hopefully, everyone could come. We still need as much support as you could possibly give, so if you have free time or whatever, or more support or whatever, just contact me, I left some flyers in the back.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is, and Happy New Year to those I haven't said Happy New Year to. I'm Nancy Thompson, and I want to thank the mayor for giving his recognition to our young fallen hero out in Crestwood, young 23-year-old Henry Mitchell Mayfield. Today was his day in Crestwood, and our mayor in the city of Blue Island honored him. I thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
For this young man giving his life to the safety of this United States of America. I'm gonna change here a little bit. I want to tell you my concerns about the new law that made marijuana legal in Illinois. You know, in Illinois, we get the reputation of being the most corrupt state in the Union, and we've got a lot of people, many have gone to jail for a lot of corruption and things was done wrong, some of our leaders. But I want to ask today and say, and let all of you know how I feel, I still have the stench of a business called Bread and Bottle Liquor Store, where our town north end of Blue Island was assaulted for 25, 30 years with alcohol, and what happened from that alcohol prostitution, selling liquor to minors and et cetera. The store at 119th Street that was known as Bread and Bottle is now vacant, and I'm pleading with when this ordinance, agreement of whoever come before, community development, and these developers, or whomever want to occupy the various places in Blue Island as dispensaries, please don't come in Fifth Ward, where I am. Please don't come near, anywhere near 11952 Longwood Drive, where I lived all these years, near that Bread and Bottle. I don't want anybody coming there gonna sell weed, because you're gonna get some trouble from me. I just wanted in the record saying it, don't bring it in the area where I'm living, because I'm still suffering from the Bread and Bottle. Don't do it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and aldermen. It is, my name is Kimberly Byrne, and I'm a resident of Blue Island. It's a pleasure to, that I speak with you today, and a privilege, and thank you for allowing me to be, for speaking with you and in the city planning discussions around recreational cannabis and the boundaries within Blue Island. A little background about me, I'm a resident of Blue Island since September of 2018 on Greenwood Avenue. I moved from San Francisco in the fall of 2018 after the point that recreational cannabis was legal in San Francisco, and saw sort of the things that the bigger city had to go through and the challenges that the residents and the people buying went through. I'm not against it, and I'm not for it, I'm neutral about it, but I just want to comment about some things that I think we need to think about. Professionally, I'm a senior management consultant focusing on transformation of enterprises and large Fortune 50 global corporations and municipal entities. I worked for the District of Columbia in one of their, in the office of the chief technology officer, and had the privilege of managing over 86 agencies, information and records management. I come before you today in response to participating and listening to a follow-up meeting on Monday, January 6th of the Planning and Zoning Council discussion of recreational cannabis zoning considerations for Blue Island. I should put my glasses on. A question I put to the committee inquired was about basically, was there a planning impact statement developed for recreational cannabis for Blue Island, so that we can be responsive responsibly instead of reactionary, which costs potentially three times more than it costs to do it the right way. As a result of the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting response, I'm before you this evening to present some of my concerns that I have not, of not having a formal recreational cannabis impact statement and plan that takes into consideration the current state of planning for introduction of recreational cannabis to the city of Blue Island. Although zoning is an important part of a plan to introduce recreational cannabis within the city of Blue Island boundaries, it is only one consideration among many that must be considered, discussed, and documented, and agreed to by our city government and Blue Island citizens' input, in tandem with communication plan, development, and discussion with citizens of Blue Island in a more public narrative for acceptance and buy-in. Additionally, as recreational cannabis is currently considered a narcotic, providing guidance into how to handle the effects of this narcotic in public is an important consideration to help educate the public regarding their health and what legally, what is their legal requirement to manage this narcotic within the city of Blue Island boundaries. In 2013, Illinois passed the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Pilot Act, a program act. I don't believe that there was any medical cannabis dispensary businesses set up in Blue Island. I could be wrong, I didn't find any. And I was curious why that didn't happen, since that was in 2013, and now today, we still don't have any medical cannabis in Blue Island. Illinois is the 11th state to legalize recreational cannabis in the U.S., but technically, it remains a Schedule I federally controlled substance. There are or may be federal laws that relate to the schedule assignment, as well as Illinois laws, Cook County, Worth Township, and Blue Island laws that must be considered in determining how Blue Island may or should respond to the ownership of managing this substance and potential opportunity. Additionally, there are surrounding and nearby cities, townships, and counties that have already made decisions within their entities that may help to guide our city's decision-making. Surely, there are lessons learned that Blue Island may want to understand and consider about what not to do to improve the success of the city, its citizens, and anyone coming into the city of Blue Island to purchase and consume recreational cannabis. Certainly, reviewing lessons learned from all states that enacted recreational cannabis could save costly mistakes and give Blue Island a leg up in decision-making. Immediate considerations that were identified in order to responsibly and legally sell and manage the use of recreational cannabis within the city of Blue Island are the following examples. Police training and response interpretation of cannabis federal laws, Illinois HB 1438, Cook County laws, Worth Township laws, and Blue Island laws for the city police force to be successful both legally, but also helping to inform the public through outreach of what they may not do, the public. Fire department training and response, properties containing hazardous materials, for example, large quantities of cannabis that they shouldn't have. Smoking, the smoking ordinance, this is not cigarettes, this is a narcotic, that needs to be updated and considered, what rules, considerations, and public outreach needs to be made. Nuisance ordinance, growth cannabis plants in and on residential properties that are medicinal only. Title 11 Business Regulations Incorporating Recreational Cannabis Dispensaries. Title 15 Chapter 150 Building Regulations and Construction. Property and Health Inspection Requirements, Training for Inspectors, and Related Documentation. Parking Rules Regarding the Presence of and Transport of Schedule I Narcotics. Loitering in Front of Cannabis Business Establishments. Signage in Parking Areas Near Cannabis Stores, signage in store, in retail stores, signage near schools, houses of worship, daycare centers, signage near hospitals, which we currently don't have. Alternative or Development of Forms Necessary for Business Submission and Setup Cannabis Business Establishment and Other Forms That Are Required by State, Local, and Blue Island City Requirements. The term cannabis, not marijuana, shall be used in all documentation according to the law. Cannabis Containment Education. Celebrations, Parties, Public Display of Promotion. Training of Blue Island Elected Officials and City Administration Officials to Respond to Matters Relating to Cannabis. Two more. Cannabis Terminology, Glossary Adoption, and Integrated Within Blue Island Business and Ordinance Documentation, and City of Blue Island Reporting Requirements to the State of Illinois and Federal Government. There's no doubt that, especially with the response seen already at the formerly only medicinal cannabis dispensaries now selling recreational cannabis, there are positive and negative considerations that should be understood, such as inventory crowds, potential picketing, cash security, and management that may cause unwanted direct and indirect crime effects, and mitigating planning that may help alleviate any issues that occurred in any states and regions, any disruption that may occur outside of any of the categories of cannabis growth, manufacturing, and dispensary environments that need to be taken into consideration. Blue Island is not just opening up a bar or a pharmacy, or any typical retail business, of which may be taken as business-as-usual installation and opening. And although recreational cannabis may be used for the same purposes as a bar or pharmacy, there are other considerations to take into account. Although it may be pretty ordinary to see a schoolteacher, clergy, business leaders, respected community leadership go into a bar or pharmacy, or buy a beer, or a bottle of wine, or fill a prescription privately, there may be different responses to any of these citizens going into or coming out of a recreational cannabis dispensary along the uptown area. The stigma of different, the stigma is different in these early days of cannabis legalization. There are generational religious and personal differences of opinion in not only the sale of, but the use of recreational cannabis that may be taken for granted, that will be totally acceptable, as totally acceptable behavior. I, for one, am neutral. But in this age of growing privacy concerns, we haven't considered the potential privacy aspects of buying and selling recreational cannabis publicly. Finally, President Kennedy once said, "We do these things not because they are easy, but because they are hard." I say to continue transformation into the little island that could be more than what it is now. We need to do things smart, not fast. Again, I ask our city to consider decision-making to develop a recreational cannabis impact statement for Blue Island. Thank you for this privilege to speak with you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Carol DePace Gray. An impact study is definitely needed. Self-insured Blue Island has not taken steps to responsibly take on recreational marijuana. Iverson's is presently competing and complaining about parking on Western. The sale of $1 billion worth of recreational marijuana will generate $25,000, not nearly enough to pay for an additional part-time Blue Island police officer. The planning and zoning meeting that took place, from start to finish, was filled with Open Meeting Act violations, including Open Meeting Act training. None of the board members for planning or zoning have Open Meeting Act trainings, so the meeting shouldn't have taken place at all. We are waiting for the planning and zoning board members to complete their Open Meeting Act training. What you have before you is a situation where there was even an attorney present from Montana and Welsh, Matt Ingersoll, who, at the point where people were asked for their address, didn't say, "When you come up, you don't have to give your name, you don't have to give your address." So, anybody who took a look at the video, and I didn't even bother to look at it till this morning, and didn't watch the whole thing, but as I watched it, it was, it was just, had an outline been put together for how to put together a meeting from start to finish and fill it with Open Meeting Act violations, it couldn't have been done any better. Fred, I see you laughing.
Because you, we had a whole conversation about it.
We did. And all I could say is, my goodness, we've got to get the impact study done, we've got to take a really good look at this stuff. If you want to do it, you gotta do it right. Blue Island is self-insured. Blue Island is self-insured. Blue Island is self-insured. I can't say it enough, we had a case in court today. Blue Island is self-insured. The payouts are still rolling out, and we are now taking out bonds to pay for these lawsuits. We don't need to incur recreational marijuana lawsuits. But whatever is put together has got to be put together thoughtfully, planfully, we can't afford these lawsuits, we can't afford all these complaints. Please, get it done right. And so far, we're not there yet. It is absolutely a work in progress, and if we have current businesses, such as Iverson's, complaining about parking now, when the recreational marijuana businesses go in along Western, and I don't think they should be there, I'd like to see them tucked away somewhere else in a far-off corner, not at the Bread and Bottle, not at the Bread and Bottle, not at the former Bread and Bottle, not there. Tuck them in in between the former Christie Webber, give them a huge setback across the street from Marshville Plaza, let them build from the ground up, put in all the steel that's needed, away from the residences, away from the children, away, away, away from the people. There are locations, we know they exist. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Alan Stevo. Under tonight's agenda, Resolution Number 2020-001, about selling city-owned property, what are the guidelines? Will the sale be open to everyone, and will it be fair and transparent? That's why I'm asking the council to make sure it happens with that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year. Anybody else? Let me move on to mayor's announcements. As former Alderman Nancy Thompson mentioned, today at 11:00, we at City Hall, specifically in the clerk's office, join forces with our brothers and sisters and the residents of Hazelcrest. Again, for the people and the aldermen who are not familiar, I think last week, around Thursday or Friday last week, in Kenya, Africa, a young soldier by the name of Henry Mitch Haywood was killed as a result of one of those improvised explosive bombs that blew up their humbe. He was 23 years of age. In fact, my understanding, his brother played for the Untouchables here in Blue Island. A great loss, not only for his community, but for this country. There's a young man, as well as there's young women, who give the ultimate sacrifices for their country and for their community, whether you're white, black, Hispanic, yellow, the rainbow, they give it all, and they did. I'm gonna ask all of you to stand, and we're gonna take a moment of silence. Again, just let me add this, it's because of those men and women, just like Henry Mitch Mayfield, that we're here enjoying our rights as citizens of this country, and that's what we cannot forget, that's why we cannot let them down, and we've got to continue moving forward, whatever it may be. City clerk, any business?
No business.
Any bids?
No bids.
City treasurer isn't here. Monthly Treasury Report, if it isn't in the back, we'll make sure it gets out there.
It is, it is.
I need an approval of the inter-fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted funds, I need a motion. The motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next is the cash collection receipts report, if it isn't out there, we'll make sure we get it out there. Do we need a motion for that?
No.
No? And then treasurer's announcements, we'll leave that when the treasurer's here. City attorney, any business?
Commissioner.
Committee reports, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Approved minutes from December 11th, 2019, Community Development Meeting, under public comment. Kevin Brown informed the committee of a possible acquisition of property along James Street by the Arts Alliance and Historical Society. Alan Stevo had questions regarding the future use of Metro South Hospital, and spoke in favor of transparency and taping of all meetings. Under new business, we had a motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Cazares, to approve the minutes from meetings in November 20th. All ayes, motion carried. We had a motion by myself, seconded by Cazares, to approve the business grant application for Fraternal Order of Eagles for tuck-pointing of their main building under the community business grant program. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Mac, to approve the business grant application for edible passport to replace the canvas canopy on their new business at 1300 Western Avenue. This is the former Maple Tree Bistro. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Cantellos Zelman, to approve the business grant application for the replacement of windows at Vada Winter at 13336 Old Western Avenue. All ayes, motion carried. That work has already been completed. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Holly, to approve pending Howard Capari's final review of the business application for Ganda Development to paint caulk, replace wood, tuck-point their property located at 13125 Western Avenue. This is a building the farthest south, right before you get to Grove and Western, on the east side of the street by the flagpoles. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Bellato, seconded by Cazares, to approve pending Howard Capari's final review of the business grant application for the Lyric Ventures LLC, Lyric Theater, at 12950 Western Avenue, to replace non-conforming awnings with new conforming canvases. All ayes. Cantellos Zelman abstained, motion carried. Kevin Brown gave the update on the mural project, more details at the January meeting. Kevin Brown gave the marketing report. There was a motion by Cazares, seconded by Holly, to send a letter to MWRD on behalf of Bios Farm to lease a portion of their land for their use. This is the same land along Canal Street that Bios Farm has previously located, and my last talk with Mr. Miller, that letter has been sent off, so we're waiting for replies. Hopefully, Bios Farm can stay at the same location they've operated in the past five years. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Holly, seconded by Mac, to authorize city personnel to execute the sale of 2427 Baroque to Lyric Venture LLC. All ayes. Cantellos Zelman abstained, motion carried. Chairman Bellato gave an update on the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee. Chairman David Johnson has called and met with the committee on December 9th, and the committee is moving forward with plans to disseminate information to the community. Chairman Bellato will seek estimates to hang new banners along Western Avenue in Spanish and English to promote the census, and will have estimates at the January meeting. Eric Alvarez from Robinson Engineering will have estimates for the resurfacing of the city parking lot located at Western and Vermont Street, South Dunkin' Donuts, at our January meeting. The committee will continue discussion on the proposed flat work, farm animals, and nuisance policies at a future meeting in January. Chairman Bellato informed the committee that the Adult Use Cannabis Tax Amendment is currently in zoning and planning, which after the recommendations, will return to community development. Chairman Bellato brought up his views on parking and the need to address scaling back the current code. The code is based on new development and not for the business structure we have on Western Avenue. You cannot even open up a coffee shop, let alone a theater, under the current code because of parking restrictions. The city must decide if it wants plenty of parking with empty storefronts, or a vibrant Western Avenue with limited parking. Chairman Bellato brought up the inequity of the current sign code enforcement. Howard Capari will address this, among other issues, in the new year. Howard Capari gave the building report, we have two new businesses in this month of December. There being no additional business discussed, motion made by Mac, seconded by Alexander, to end the meeting at 8:30 PM. We had a meeting last week, the minutes have to be approved at my next meeting on February 17th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Under my reports, I only have one motion to approve Resolution 2020-001, a resolution authorizing city staff to conduct the sale of the property commonly known as 2427 Baroque Avenue, Blue Island, Illinois, with property index numbers 2436-205-0130000, 24-36-205-024-0000, 24-36-205-025-0000, and 24-36-205-034-0000.
Good motion. Do we have a second by Alderman? Do we have a second by Alderman Tom Holly? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander. Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Abstained.
Abstained. Nine ayes and one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Our next meeting is February 17th. We had to conflict the scheduling, so our normal meeting is moved to February 17th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. February 17th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll read the minutes from our Finance Committee meeting on Monday, January 6th, 2020. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Kevin Donahue at 6:00 PM in the East Annex. Roll call was taken, and Alderman Donahue, Clinker, and Alexander were in attendance. Absent was Alderman Johnson and Alderman Bellato. Also in attendance was Executive Assistant to the Mayor Marisol Barrera, City Treasurer Carmine Bellato, and City Attorney Carrie Horvath. There's no public comment offered to the committee. Committee first was presented a service agreement extension would need electric service to maintain various stoplights at intersections throughout the city. There was a couple of questions that needed further follow-up, and it was decided to table this matter to the next meeting. There was a motion to table by Alderman Clinker and a second by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion to table was passed unanimously. The committee then heard an update regarding the Air Mac service agreement. It was brought to the committee's attention that Air Mac is seeking payment for the AED machine they placed at the golf course at the request of a former employee of the city. The committee agreed that it is important to have an AED machine on-site at the golf course, but wanted some more information from golf course manager Teddy Ruthenberg before approving payment. There's also discussion on how many first aid kits should be purchased and locations where the kits should be placed. It was asked of Ms. Barrera to work with the Fire Chief to prepare a memo on cost of purchasing the first aid kits. There's no action taken on that item. The committee then heard a presentation from City Attorney Carrie Horvath regarding some outstanding questions members had regarding certain portions of invoices of the Alderson and Stirk bills. Executive Assistant Marisol Barrera then presented the committee with the wage adjustment proposal from the mayor's office for various management positions in the city. It was decided that this will be taken up during the upcoming appropriation process. The committee then took up a request from Rec Center Manager Bob Jackson to fund the annual Black History event at the John D. Rita Rec Center. Mr. Jackson stated that the city has hosted a Black History event at the Rec Center the past four years, and the event is always well-attended. He requested $2,500 for the event. There's a motion to approve by Alderman Alexander and a second made by Alderman Clinker. Voice vote was taken, and the motion to approve was passed unanimously. Payroll for the week ending December 27th, 2019, was then discussed. There's a motion to approve the payroll in the amount of $336,032.92, made by Alderman Clinker and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion to approve was approved unanimously. This is item number two on our finance-- on the city council agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Get a motion. Do we have a second by Alderman Bellato? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. The committee then took up the accounts payable. This month was a little higher due to the city's health insurance being in the accounts payable. After much discussion and some question and answer, it was decided to remove one invoice submitted by Robinson Engineering. There was a motion to approve the accounts payable for $520,127.20, made by Alderman Clinker, and a second was made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion to approve was approved unanimously. This is item number one under the Finance Committee portion of the agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve. If there's any questions, I'd also be happy to answer.
Go ahead.
One question. I just want to say I will vote to approve the payables. I just want to state once again, for the record, that-- and I don't-- and I want to make it clear that I don't feel that Montana and Welch-- I do feel that they are a qualified and competent law firm. I'm not questioning that. I just don't feel that there's a need-- and I also believe it's actually a waste of money to have a second attorney retained for the services that are ably provided by our existing city attorney. One item-- there's $4,500 roughly in this payables report being paid to Montana and Welch. One item in particular I'd note is an item for preparation for attendance city council meeting of $1,063.75. And I'm not questioning that they needed to prepare for attendance at the meeting. I just don't think they should have been there in the first place. I was at the hearing that we had on cannabis at zoning and plan commission. And, you know, they were there representing those committees. I personally find it confusing, who do I go to about various issues? I just think it's a duplicative effort, unnecessary, and a waste. But we do have a legal obligation to pay them. We have a legal agreement with them. So I will vote to approve the payables.
Do we get a motion? Do we have a second? I didn't get a second.
No, you didn't.
By Alderman Clinker.
Clinker. Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
I just-- I appreciate what Alderman Farenwald said. I respectfully disagree. I think they're doing a great job, and they've done a lot of work to help the city council move a lot of things forward. So I respect your opinion. I just disagree.
I defer to your opinion.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Second? Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. Finally, the committee heard a brief update from Treasurer Bellato. There was then a motion to adjourn made by Alderman Alexander and a second made by Alderman Clinker. The committee was adjourned at 7:25 PM. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the East Annex. We are moving to Wednesday due to the Martin Luther King Holiday on this upcoming Monday. So it'll be Wednesday, January 22nd, at 6:00 PM here in the East Annex. So then there's one more item. This is-- it's Resolution 2020-002. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Pace Systems, Inc. through the integration, licensing, and use of Pace scheduling software in the police department. This is replacing an old program the police department was using. It's more efficient and better suited for the police department's needs. It's less expensive, too, so it is a savings for the city. If there are any other questions, I would defer to Police Chief. If not, I make a motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second by Alderman Zilman-- Cantellos Zilman? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farenwald.
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
We had the Public Health and Safety Committee met on December 17th here at the East Annex. We were called to order at 6:25 PM. Roll call presented by Alderman Carr, Cazares, Farenwald, and Clinker, and also Chief Fire Chief Dan Rita. Absent were Alderman Hill, Johnson, Slattery, Chief Orzab, and Don Marchbanks. Alderman Clinker noted Chief Orzab had advised him prior to the meeting she wouldn't be in attendance. I believe she's on vacation. There was no public presence, so there was no public comment. Under Fire Department Business, Chief Rita presented the November monthly report. He stated there were 288 EMS responses, 106 fire response, including 10 auto aid responses, and one mutual aid response. Medical reimbursements collected for the month of November were totaled $47,246.63. The year-to-date total for medical reimbursements is $396,958.22. Fire recovery collected $1,378.8 for the month. That year-to-date total is $20,854. False alarm fees collected were $300 for the month. The year-to-date total for that is $4,477.62. Chief reported on some calls of interest. The Fire Department assisted Robbins Fire Department with the fire at the old incinerator over there in Robbins. They also assisted Cook County with the body recovery from out in the old Clark Oil Refinery. Blue Island had a kitchen fire on Everett and assisted on house fire in Cal Park. Chief had nothing but praise for the guys on those calls, said they all worked together and did a great job together. Under general information, Chief Rita reported that the Fire Department assisted the Chicago Fire TV show with filming at Jeans Cleaners and presented an invoice for manpower that will be reimbursed to the city by the television show. Chief is preparing for the upcoming appropriations. The department is still having problems with the pump for the Amcus unit. He'll be asking for additional extrication equipment in the upcoming appropriations. The truck at that time was still out of service, but it will be available for the New Year's Eve ball drop. Fire prevention work is ongoing. There were 239 total training hours reported for the month. The department hosted a building construction class for area departments on two dates in November. The chief stated it went well, and he would like to hold additional trainings in the future. They have completed S-CBA fit testing for the year. They were having an officers' meeting scheduled to discuss operational issues, and he's continuing to look into upgrading EMS to ALS. Overtime hours in 7G pay also was presented. There was an item on the agenda about repairing the 2010 Ford Explorer. The chief requested authorization to pay for the repair of the 2010 Ford Explorer that was damaged in early October. He stated he was involved in an accident on his way to work with a woman who ran a red light. He clipped her back end, resulting in damage to the front passenger-side quarter panel and headlight of the Explorer. Chief stated there was money in the budget for vehicle repairs, and he's been advised that this will eventually be paid by the woman's insurance, but he wants to pay for it now so he can get the vehicle back on the road, and then we'll get reimbursed by the insurance company later. He didn't have an estimate, but stated the amount was a few thousand dollars. The committee authorized repairs at this time, since he had the money in his budget. Discussion-- there was also another item regarding-- a discussion regarding acting lieutenant pay grievance filed by the union. Alderman Clinker advised that this committee used to be part of the grievance procedure in the BIPFA contract. The procedure changed a few contracts ago, and the committee is no longer part of the process. Grievances go to the department head, followed by the mayor, his designee, and finally to arbitration. Chief Rita stated he just wanted to advise the committee of the grievance and its status. The union filed the grievance stating the person in charge of Station 2 should receive acting upgrade pay, since he's effectively in charge of that station for the day. The grievance was denied by the chief in the first step. The second step was recently conducted with Chief Rita, Attorney Horvath, Union President Duffy, and Union Representative McDonald. Chief Rita stated that Attorney Horvath asked him to bring it to the committee to see our thoughts about this issue. Currently, when the lieutenant is off work, a firefighter gets acting lieutenant pay for filling in at Station 1 for the shift, for the entire shift, according to departmental memo. Grievances go to the department head, followed by the mayor, his designee, and finally to arbitration. Chief Rita stated he just wanted to advise the committee of the grievance and its status. The union filed the grievance stating the person in charge of Station 2 should receive acting upgrade pay, since he's effectively in charge of that station for the day. The grievance was denied by the chief in the first step. The second step was recently conducted with Chief Rita, Attorney Horvath, Union President Duffy, and Union Representative McDonald. Chief Rita stated that Attorney Horvath asked him to bring it to the committee to see our thoughts about this issue. Currently, when the lieutenant is off work, a firefighter gets acting lieutenant pay for filling in at Station 1 for the shift, for the entire shift, according to departmental memo. The shift differential amount is $3.048 per hour, or about $83 per shift. Alderman Clinker stated he thought that at this point it's up to the mayor to make a response, not the committee. Alderman Farenwald added that our committee can't take any official action, and he believes it's in the mayor's hands now. Under Police Department Business, Alderman Clinker stated, "We're going to have Chief Orzab go over the monthly report." She did email it to us, but instead of trying to go through it ourselves, we're just going to have her go through it at our next meeting. Under the Speeding Task Force, Alderman Farenwald gave a report. He gave preliminary recommendation regarding restriction of turns onto Florence Street from Western Avenue during morning and evening rush hours, along with monitoring for results. Other possibilities that they were looking at included speed monitoring signs which collect data, installing bump outs, speed bumps, and possibly speed cameras, which are illegal in the state, is what he said. The committee agreed to have the task force set up a town hall meeting to advise and get input from all residents, since there are multiple areas of town that are experiencing problems with speeding. Alderman Farenwald will check with the mayor, the clerk, and the city attorney to see what's going to be needed to be done to facilitate this meeting. Under Alderman's concerns, there were none. A motion was made to adjourn by Alderman Carr at 6:50 PM, seconded by Alderman Farenwald. All in favor? The motion carried. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 21st, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
Alderman, we have a question for our-
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. You, in your report, you mentioned that we assisted with Chicago Fire filming a jeans cleaner.
Yeah.
Tomorrow night is that episode.
Oh, thank you. Didn't know that.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman?
We also have a grievance hearing that's scheduled for two days from now, Thursday. But everyone's been informed that both the ASME people and everyone knows what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Municipal Services Committee.
Mayor. Yeah, oh, sorry, by the way. Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Clinker, will your committee be followed up on the two reimbursements?
So, I did check, what did I ask? I asked that at our Finance the other day, and Marisol told me they were both reimbursed, it was already paid back.
They were already paid.
Yep. I asked that the other night when we had Finance Committee.